We have a guest online, is that?
That is from the legal group with Kim.
Oh, okay, Kim's. Uh, proxy.
Hi.
Hello, good evening. Thanks for having me.
It's so being here.
All right, uh, we're gonna call the order and declare a moron. So we're called the order. And now we are moving to public comment. Do you know one? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. And um, consider of the approval of the meeting minutes from November nineteenth.
I move.
Okay. They're very detailed.
They were agreed then.
Right.
Hi, second.
All in favor of approving the meeting minutes from uh, November nineteenth?
Hi.
Unanimous, all opposed and nothing. Okay. Okay. And uh, the bi-monthly treasury report. Um, David, are you gonna give that or?
Adrianne today?
Yeah. Okay. Kara?
Stuff I can share the um. Yeah, so you all have two statements?
Page nine and ten.
So just as like a clarifying point, because this was not a hundred percent clear to me. Um, the first one, the statement of activities, this is as of the end of November. So this is not, this is not like projections of the year end or nor is it a reflection of the year end. This is where we were at as of November thirtieth. So that first column was the budget, second column is where we were at as of November ele- November thirtieth. And then that third column is just the math. It's just the, you just delete the first from the second. So it's um, it's not, cuz I, in my head, I thought because it's dated twelve thirty-one, that maybe it was some kind of like year-end projection and then I got confused and it's not, it's just the math. So I think at a high level, you'll see that, you know, almost all of these percentages that tell you, you know, percentage of our speed versus spent of the budget. Adrianne said that at this time of year, in theory, we would wanna be at like ninety percent there, because that would mean we'd have like about a month left. I'm not very good at math, I'm a lawyer, but we should be about at ninety percent. And uh, we aren't close to that on almost any of them. So um, I think we all already knew that this was coming, but we're gonna be pretty under budget for twenty twenty-four, as far as we can tell. Barring anything crazy, yeah.
Um, so I was just curious, I mean, it's not a huge part of the budget that like the marketing and engagement is only a sixty-four.
Um, wondered what, I mean, it's not like, again, it's not huge numbers, but I was just curious. Yeah, some are like significantly lower. I think probably David could speak more to why any specific line item would be low.
And administrative is lower too.
Yeah, so um, I can take that. So I mean, first of all, it should be ninety-two. It should be closer to ninety-two percent if we were really truly tracking eleven months out of the year. Uh, the one, the biggest one is the one that's most understandable, I think, too, cuz we've been over it multiple times. The staffing expenses are only at seventy percent. We anticipated that we would be far under this year, because it took the first six months of the year really to ramp up. And we only had our first full month of budget, I think, in August of full staffed. So that's the reason why that one is there. Uh, sixty-four is marketing engagement. Uh, plans kind of went a little awry there. We had initially, you know, we hired a communications and marketing team. Uh, the plan was to execute on a couple of different um, what do you call them? Not product roles, but a couple of different campaigns that we were planning on doing. We contracted with a, an outside firm. Uh, that did not work out well for us. We had Novo and then uh, soon after Novo, uh, we parted ways with them. And we were not able to put together uh, a separate group. So the plan would be in twenty twenty-five. We've already begun um, hiring out some of the design work. And we'll have one, one major campaign in twenty twenty-five around literacy and outreach, which the foundation is funding. Uh, but we have a couple of other campaigns. Uh, Summer of Discovery, One Book, One Boulder. It's a list and I don't know precisely what the list is, but uh, there will be a number of things that we'll be doing, marketing campaigns around. So um, I apologize if it didn't work. You know, it had some legs, it was um, it's just hard with having to manage an outside firm as well as um, growing new staff. And we thought to give the staff some time to get their legs under them before they had a marketing executive in here telling us exactly what we should be doing. And any of the others that you have questions about? The administrative cost encompasses, and Jennifer can jump in if I'm wrong. The administrative cost uh, encompasses um, so I think some elements of uh, training and sub-budgets, which we may be underspent on. And that's what we expected the uh, in twenty twenty-three, it was that the, we established a massive increase to both training and to the sub-budget. And that was in uh, with the workplace subcommittee. Had asked for a number of different things and we felt it was the right thing to do. It's just we kind of went over. What, why, why is the administrative line so far underspent, Jennifer?
I'm gonna get into Sage and tell you, just a minute, just a minute. I don't believe the sub-budget is there, I think it's under personnel.
Okay.
Let me get that report up live. What's in administration?
It's your gift. Thank you.
Office and copy supplies um, were forty-one percent spent. We have a balance of seventy-two thousand there. Um, bank fees were under uh, at sixty-six percent, about three thousand there. Postage and courier also under sixty-two percent. We have thirty-nine thousand there. And then um, there's a line item that's shared by several different areas called supplies, materials and tools. And we're also at thirty percent there. So we have a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars left. So it's mostly supplies and it's just we over budgeted. Not knowing what we were, not knowing what to expect this year.
Any other questions about specific line item?
Not a specific line item, but Jennifer, just in general, I know previously you'd kind of projected we'd endear with a certain amount. Is this more or less in line with what your projections were?
Yep, it's exactly in line with it.
Great.
So yeah, just a couple of others. We have fully paid off our debt to the city of Boulder. That happened since our last meeting, so that's totally done. Adrianne said that by leaving that uh, money in the college trust account for most of the year, we were able to accrue a lot more interest than maybe we had planned. And by the end of the year, they're projecting about nine hundred.
Idea.
Yeah. By the end of the year, they're projecting nine hundred thousand dollars of interest income. For twenty twenty-four, so.
Come on in, how are you?
Oh, yes, this is, this is the right, this is the right meeting. No, can I, can I get you a chair?
Nine hundred thousand.
Okay.
No, 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 sit down. Our Pasha is with um, Parasol Patrol, founder, the co-founder of the Parasol Patrol.
Do we show in revenue? Interest income?
Yep.
Oh.
It's in the third line under revenue.
Oh, there it is, interesting.
It's at eight thirty-seven now, by the end of December, they are expecting something north of ninety.
Well, yeah.
So that's good, so that's, and that's mostly from the money that was in there from the, that we then paid back the city. But also there is still a lot of money in there, cuz most of our liquid stays in that account, so. So it's gonna keep generating revenue. Adrianne also noted that the cafe is doing better than expected. Um, and that that, we'll start to see that more in the, the statements over time, but that it didn't cost as much as that we thought it would and it theoretically might make more than we thought it would, so both things, you know, it's um, so that's just a, a small thing that, you know, still is a benefit.
Is that sales and revenue column? That's the cafe sale?
No, it's down in the bottom. It's like third.
Well, that's a budget and expenses.
Yeah, I don't know if sales from the cafes on this sheet or not, but it, it's under budget as far as what was spent on the cafe.
Yeah, you're talking about this.
Yeah, okay.
It's under, I believe, yes.
Um, and your to-date balance for the cafe revenues are um, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars.
And that's in sales? That's in sales?
Correct, that's in sales.
Like the book, the used bookstore or something?
Um, yes, used bookstore, some other taxes, that sort of thing.
There is another accounting specialist who's gonna start with library staff in twenty twenty-five. Um, so they're looking forward to that. And apparently, I think Jennifer's gonna talk a lot more about this, but the audit went well. The uh, those were kind of the high-level things that I talked about. Ariana, um, I think the only real note on the second, on the balance sheet was just the same note that there's just kind of a lot of money rolling over from last year to this year to next year, which we knew and we've done as part of the process. So none of it's surprise, I just, I, I had some questions about kind of how it all breaks down, but um, it's all as as predicted.
On future reports, would you like the other revenue line expanded? To show cafe specifically? It's easy to do, it's a matter of just turning it on. Yeah, okay.
Be great.
Cafe is amazing, by the way. I'm a big fan.
The bottom line is we, we have more revenue than we anticipated and we've spent less than we anticipated, so. But not by.
None.
The um, so this was to be, and again, next year, we're gonna see a little bit of the same, right? We're not, not quite as much. And I think it'll be probably two or three years before the budget evens out, where it's like money in, money out, which is where we wanna be ultimately. But I think for these first few years, because of the initial amount that we had at the beginning, um, it's gonna take a few years to spend it down.
We approved the, the budget for twenty-five, but you haven't, have you advertised? Do you start advertising the positions for, that you're gonna hire already or not?
I think we advertised a couple, some of the jobs don't actually, we're not filling until April and May.
Oh, okay.
I think we advertised uh, the finance people and maybe one of the HR jobs. I don't know which other ones we've already advertised, but.
Yeah.
There are a couple of jobs we'd like to get filled, uh, January second.
Yeah, we've made an offer to the accounting specialist that will start in January.
Right. Any more questions on the finance? Report? Thank you, finance committee.
Was very mating.
If you wanna introduce our guest, we'll take a brief pause real quick and.
I would, I would love to, do you, are you guys gonna adjust the agenda so that we don't, like her sit through the entire?
Yeah, I didn't wanna make her sit.
Yeah, so Pasha, Pasha and Eli were the founders of the Parasol Patrol like?
Yes.
Eight, ten years ago, nine years ago?
No, uh, we started officially in twenty nineteen.
I think I met you then in Denver in the.
And then COVID.
And then, yeah. And so.
Before COVID in it.
So, uh, and I don't know Pasha or Eli's last name, I don't know that they.
My last name is Ripley and Eli's last name is Bazan, B-A-Z-A-N.
Okay, great. Thank you very mu- thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, so uh, Tom had come to the Drag Queen's Story Hour, I think a couple, last month. And saw, you know, the great work you guys did. And I, I've come to before and seen the great work you guys did. And so we wanted to um, we just give you a letter of recognition. You know, for your help and I'll read it out loud for you if you don't mind. We'll read it into the rec.
I was told I was coming first, like some sort of planning thing, so I'm in my T-shirt and.
Coming to be a, uh, recognized.
Or his T-shirt.
You get further, foundation on fixed.
So um, so it says, dear members, and hopefully you can pass this on to your folks.
Yes.
Uh, as, as trustee of the Boulder Library District, we wanna thank you for your service to our library and community. Since twenty twenty-one, Parasol Patrol volunteers have shown up for each Drag Queen's Story Hour and have created a colorful, fun and safe passage for the parents and children who attend. The power of your effort is reflected in the delight on the faces of the children and parents as they walk through your passage and safely through our library doors. And your volunteerism and is emblematic of the inclusive and diverse community that is Boulder, Colorado.
Oh, my God.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I have a letter.
We'll give you a non-stay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, I, I honest, I'm so sorry. I was like, oh, this planning meeting, I was like, okay.
So we just wanted to thank you. That's it, you can have some, you're welcome to stay for as long of the meeting as you want, you're, you can have some food.
Made a pot roast, so.
Okay. So thank you so much.
Also, I just wanna say thanks a ton and that you guys do such great work. And it's so important, like this is the most challenged program we have by far. And every, every time we do it, we get hate mail. And uh, honestly, they've made it such a wonderful event for everyone and it really is emblematic. I think of what the library stands for and in terms of our inclusiveness. I give the little spiel to the new incoming employees every two weeks about. And I always use uh, Drag Queen Story Hour and the Parasol Patrol and, and talk about um, A, civil rights. And then B, just the, the message that the Drag Queen Story uh, Hour, the drag queens who have done it in the past have said, and it's like, the, 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 this, this is not at all what you think. It, it is simply about uh, being inclusive, showing that everyone is welcome here and is deserving of love. And I think like, that's all I really need to write back to all the people who write in. I wish I could just have them talk to the drag queens, because they do such an amazing job each time. And if you have not been, I would encourage you to go. If you have kids, I would encourage you to bring them. It is a wonderful display of like Boulder at its finest and a look at families in a way that's not quite like what we're fed on TV fifty years ago. So it's a, it's a remarkable event and I thank you for the work you guys do. We started in twenty nineteen at Mile High Comics. They were having a monthly show and protesters were coming out and it was like three or four. And then it was eight, their numbers kept doubling and it was just Eli and me and like a couple sets of parents. And so there were like thirty or forty of them out there with bullhorns and signs. I, I pictured, I mean, it's just, it was really awful. And so I, I made a Facebook group and, you know, sent out invitations to two separate groups, one Allies and one to LGBTQIA+ and over a hundred volunteers showed up the first time, it was amazing. And um, so we were doing that. And then our first non-Mile High Comics um, request was at the Lafayette Library. And they were getting a lot of hate mail and there's, there's one particular haker, one particular preacher that was coming from California to here. And so we rallied the troops and people asked me, what is like your one memory that was amazing? And I'm gonna get all verklempt. But um, when we were, there were kids going in and out of the library and one mom wrote to us and said, our kid thought drag story, storytime is ruined now, because my child thought that they were on a red carpet runway to Disneyland. But we play Disney music, because when these schmucks like record stuff and try to put it up on YouTube, that video gets taken pretty quick, live streams also, gone. But um, so this little, this girl was walking out with her mom, sleeping in a little Elsa costume. And so we hit the little speaker to play Let It Go. And one of our volunteers has, we didn't know how, gorgeous, gorgeous, used to be a professional singer, started singing Let It Go. And um, this little girl was like, and turned around with mom. I'm getting, and they, we had other volunteers come and harmonize. Everybody was in tears and that little, probably four-year-old girl just belted out with our volunteer the entire soundtrack. And yeah, it was, it was a, a beautiful thing that our whole goal is, we want the kids to know, to think there weren't protesters at all, if we have them. And uh, and our highest compliment is when parents come back and say, hey, you know, we didn't even know there were protesters. So that's what we do, I know, but uh, yeah, I mean, sorry I'm taking up your time, I know.
I just wanted to say that the Boulder Public Library system has a very special place in our hearts. Uh, we're dear friends with um, Stuart Sanks, who's Miss Shirley, an award, federal award-winning third-grade teacher that, that does storytelling. They're actually gonna be doing it this uh, Saturday and it happens to be Eli's birthday the day before. So uh, we may sneak in a birthday cake for. And so, thank you all very much. I honestly just thought this could be. But thank you, I, I appreciate, I, I, I appreciate it more than you know.
Thank you.
Tell you like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, it was like they sent me to two different meetings.
Fine.
Flipping coupons for fruits and vegetables here.
Thank you and have a safe trip home and happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you, they, see, I normally fold them in thirds, but I don't wanna fold this one, so I'm just gonna have to carry it.
We can also scan a copy and send it to you.
Oh, yeah.
This is the original though.
Yeah. Like the key to the library.
Yes. Did we get a key now?
Sure you do.
I don't need.
Never have to pay fines ever again. All the books you want.
Yeah, go take any book you want.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, um, was that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just, one little? Yeah, picky kind of thing.
Yes.
Should we just, we get our own letterhead?
Yes, yes, it was supposed to be on letterhead.
Just saying, it, it looks more, you know, official.
You're right, yes.
We'll do another one on letterhead.
We'll do another one on letterhead, I, I would appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, it just gives a little bit more.
Yes. My bad, so um, okay. I think we should have a little more fancy letterhead, if you ask me.
Tim's awesome.
Well, yeah, like we should at least, maybe we have uh, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars left in paper supply, so.
Come on.
When we. As its partners in the life.
Potentially buy some nice.
List the trustees aside.
That would be nice, yeah.
Buy one package of it, use it carefully.
Right, so anyway.
I'm gonna acquire.
Fifty bucks of that. All right, um, let's get moving. Uh, mid-year audit report, that was really touching, thank you.
That's great.
About to cry, so.
All right, uh, so you have a, a little update in your packet memo, but I received a brief email from a Lily in the auditor. And I'd like to just read it to you, cuz it has a little more information. She says, we typically don't provide anything written for the interim work. If we have comments, we usually include them in the board letter after the audit. At this point, we don't have any recommendations for control improvement. And as you have already addressed, the corrected and corrected the para findings, we won't have any considerations for the board letter comments pertaining to interim work at this time. Says, let me know if you'd like something else or more formal from me to present to the board regarding our interim work. Can let them know that we've interviewed and documented controls around disbursements, receipting and tested payroll and that the main finding was the pair of contribution corrections. We will have a final board letter that encompasses the interim and audit when financials are issued.
I do, I think for me, just if we get that final, that letter, that's all, we'll enter it into the record.
Of this email?
No, they said they're gonna issue a, when financials are posted, they'll issue, whenever you do that, then they'll just.
That's for the audit, so that's.
Oh, that's the final audit. Oh, yeah, we, we should probably just put this email then in the, into the packet.
Okay.
That's uh, covers our duties, I believe. Anybody else have any comments about that? Yes. Okay.
Just real quick, what was the nature of the pair issue, just how significant was it?
Jennifer, you wanna talk about it or do you want?
The way we had um, the uh, we computed the includeable salary, which is a portion of the wages that are earned by employees. Um, and from that, they calculate the, the percentage of the contribution that we submit monthly. Well, we had certain things included in one group. There's two groups of para employees, so there's para employees who started before, I believe it's like June nine, twenty nineteen. Uh, those have a different includeable salary calculation than the ones hired afterwards. And so in both cases, we um, included things that kind of over, overestimated the includeable salary. So contributions were higher than they needed to be. So we've, for the most part, we've credited all the employees that are due something. And now I'm working through the uh, twenty-six different payroll reports to reconcile with para, so.
Okay. We mostly overpaid.
I mean, it sounds like this isn't like people are, missed an entire paycheck or anything on that order, it's, the corrections are reasonable.
Uh, para, the percentages that we contribute are set by the legislature. They change every year or two and they change the conditions of things and what counts every few years. And so it's a, it's a complicated procedure, it's probably why, what I told Jennifer when we got this thing back was that this is why a bunch of places have left para. It's, it's, it's a great plan, complicated plan to look at.
Employees pay nine percent of their includeable salary and then uh, the district pays uh, fourteen point seven eight percent of the includeable salary. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, director's updates.
All right, so um, I have five things, big, all big things that require uh, approval and or action. You, um, we'll start with the construction projects. So the one, look, take a look at the menu, we, we did include the um, you remember, some of you probably weren't here at the time. Uh, in the twenty twenty-four budget, we included money for reconfiguration of space, the main library. You came back to you with the first phase of that and the second phase. Uh, we said at that time we were holding off on, because there were a number of components and we couldn't afford them all. Uh, we made the decision for the, to try to do before the end of the year. One component of that reconfiguration, which fits in the initial budget that you approved for twenty twenty-four. And that is doing the uh, conversion of the North Library, uh, Main Library North, this building's locker room into a break area, uh, which is uh, one of high demand. It's really, it's a room with a refrigerator and a microwave and that, most importantly, uh, on the heart of the staff, a dishwasher and place to store dishes and that kind of thing. So the overall cost of that, uh, I'm not looking at right now, I think it's around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Is that correct? Uh, we're looking for approval of that um, contract. You have the proposal on page, beginning on page thirty-one.
Fifteen.
It's a hundred and five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, a hundred and five thousand dollars. And that's to complete that work, uh, to begin that work as soon as possible. So do you wanna do these one at a time or just?
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, so there is a motion uh, in the, in the packet, I believe. Uh, no, there isn't. So I just, uh, what we'll need is a signature on the contract, really from you, Doug.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think we did the, a motion to approve the contract. Written on page fifteen.
Uh, this will be a motion to approve the contract for converting the locker room into a staff room in the north.
I'd move approval of this contract.
Anybody else? Let me keep looking at it, everybody good, we invoke?
Just discussion. This has nothing to do with this, but just from my identification. What's the relation between Guardian versus JOC?
Guardian is a clearinghouse that we work with, JOC is a contractor within Guardians. Guardian is a clearinghouse of government-approved, uh, Guardian's a uh, a clearinghouse of government-approved contractors. JOC is the one that we've been working with um, extensively, I should say, I mean, I think they've done great work.
extensively, I should say. I mean, I think they've done great work. Uh, they, their prices.
They're doing the playground in Nobo.
They're doing the playground in Nobo. That was the first contract. They got, they fixed the roof here. Uh, they fixed a number of leaks and things along with the boiler. They have submitted proposals for the, which we'll look at in twenty twenty-five around, uh, heat. Heat and cooling, the HVAC upgrades. Uh, so they're, they're submitting proposals on virtually everything that we do.
We don't have to competitively bid these projects. These are, they're like in that pre-approved list.
Yeah, we do not. They're on the government, uh, pre-approved list. You know, in some cases, we do look at different things, uh, for the, for the break room. We did look at another, um, proposal.
Looking further. So Gordian has a, a catalog and they do, um, RFPs once a year. And they hire, um, several different construction-related companies. And then, um, we just submit our request to Guardian for anything they want and they'll pull, pull, um, available vendors. We can absolutely look at more than one if we want to, but because we have such a great working relationship with Joc, we just decided to continue with them.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, all in favor of approving the contract, uh, for the break room, uh, say aye? Any opposed?
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, staff can be really, they're really excited about a dishwasher and place to store the.
A new one.
Do I just pay sign on page thirteen?
Yeah.
Of the sign page.
And then I want to go directly to the Gun Barrel facility renovation. Uh, this is, uh, the proposal for the renovation of the building. As I mentioned in my email, it is a lot of, uh, demolition work, building some walls, uh, some electrical plumbing, building the bathrooms, uh, some minor mechanical work, uh, on the HVAC. And the, uh, fire suppression system will also have to be redone to get us up to code. Uh, we plan on, um, redoing all the flooring in the space. Um, and there's some requirements to patch the ceiling where I don't know if it was when, when I think when you guys were out, out there, the ceiling had already uh, collapsed in various areas or perhaps not. I don't know. I, um.
No, it was after.
It was after. Yeah. And so, um, the price for this one is one point two million dollars, uh, again with Joc. Um, and we've had, uh, a separate architect firm that we've been working with called P E H. They're, they're a subcontractor of, of Joc. As we've worked through this process of the last few months. So I'm happy to take any questions about, um, I think it is within budget. Um, it's kind of what we expected. I had said, I had thought one point one, but one point two doesn't surprise me when I realize the HVAC and the fire suppression, which I hadn't counted on.
It's twelve to the actual start date because it's, it says estimated completion date two, two, twenty-four. And I'm assuming that's actually the start date.
That's.
Just on the cover of the signature document.
Probably you're right that it's probably really a start date. Um, what they would do is they would take this to submit for permitting the, the scope work and that kind of thing. And the architects have a plan. I don't know if we included in your packet, any of the floor plans. Um, I think we did. It's not elaborately different than what you saw when you were there. We did knock out all the banker's desks. Uh, we'll be knocking out a wall. I think it is worth noting because I, we, I think you guys were excited about it when we talked about the possibility of using some of the area for storage for Carnegie. We've kind of leapt on that plan and not going to go forward with it. Uh, there were some, uh, room control requirements for putting in the Carnegie space that were, uh, you know, expensive. And, and it really was only about to offset about ten percent of the collection in Carnegie that they would have been able to store there. And it really, we will have to find a different solution. We are looking at other solutions. In addition to the, the idea, I think that you guys talked about somewhat about moving it in its entirety to a new location, which is something that we're also pursuing with regard to Meadows. We are looking at temporary, uh, mitigation of some of the storage needs that Carnegie currently has in another location. Uh, and we'll probably be bringing that back to you next month or to the following one. Yes.
So we are leasing this building, right?
Yep.
So is it common to, you know, sort of attach such an investment to something that we don't own? I mean, have we done that as it relates to, I don't know, other branches and over two, two branches?
We lease all of our locations. So yes, it is, uh, common. The, the arrangement, um, of leasing from a, a, a public entity like the trust, uh, like this trust and leasing from the city are, are somewhat different. But no, I don't think it's, uh, out of the ordinary. I mean, I, Boulder Public Library, we've only been in this position for a year. I've been in other libraries where we leased facilities and yeah, you have to turn it into a library and you wind up spending some money for that. Even if it means that you're going to move in five or 10 years. I know in my last library, we, we totally redid a space. And in some cases, when you re, begin to redo a space, there are requirements, right? Once you begin the work to redoing it, then there are unexpected costs that you maybe hadn't anticipated, like having to redo the fire suppression system to meet code, uh, redoing the bathrooms, uh, in their entirety, um, all of this, but the flooring and walls and office space and accommodating, uh, electronic sorting and those kind of things. They're kind of critical functions of the building operating as a library.
Yeah. So what I was wondering about is do we get possibly any credit for the investments we make into the building when it comes time to maybe consider buying it?
Well, the way the contract is written, the lease is written, uh, it's only in terms of shared costs having to do with the function of the building. And so, no, I don't believe we would in this case.
But it's not super uncommon, like for businesses, like in commercial leases, they'll rip out everything and redo it all. I mean, not that we are doing that, but, but it's always on the tenant, at least in commercial leases. For, for like, um, yeah, and we don't have to return the space to the, the thing, but we also have a ten-year lease. I, I thought about that too. It's five and five. Yeah.
Five renewal.
Automatic renewal. We can renew in five years. So.
So if you amortize that out.
Yeah, it's, it's not so terrible. It, it is. I, I agree. It's, it's a lot of money, but I kind of feel like we have to make it into a library space. Some of the things we're doing are like ADA accessible bathrooms and, uh, nursing rooms.
Nursing station, which I meant for staff, but we have done them now for, in all locations.
And.
Uh, in this location and.
And then they're redoing the entire fire suppression system, which is a major kind of thing. So.
I've sent an email into them, uh, to the landlord. It's a trust and so the management person, company, or whatever will get back to me if there's any kind of disc, whatever it would be. So we did tell them that if there was if there were costs that we were looking for in a shared expense, and that would be like replacing the entire HVAC system, as I understand the contract.
Right.
Then they would be a shared cost.
Parking lot.
Yes, is that they would pass that on to us in the next lease, right? Like they.
The parking lot, like the exterior kind of, you know, structural stuff, the HVAC, the parking lot, those kind of things should be added as additional rent. So they would amortize it and give it to us and, you know, we wouldn't pay for the whole thing. But these are sort of tenant improvements that typically fall on us.
Okay. We didn't get the actual contract. I'm not missing it somewhere.
Uh, you do. It's.
It's a separate.
Separate.
And so, yeah, over the 10 years, um,
Yeah.
It's ten thousand dollars a month, but it, but it's not nothing. I, I, I see that. It's not the inclusive cost of all of Gun Barrel. So we have budgeted two and a half million dollars. Uh, we have spent already money in terms of demolition. Um, we still have I T costs, some of which you've already approved in this, in your meetings, uh, with around the sorter, the electronic sorting equipment. Um, the book budget has already been approved. So there are things that go into the building that are not represented in this one point two, but this is the biggest chunk of change that we'll see in the entire.
And I'm, and I'm sure when you did Meadows, there was some, you know, we, we, we probably couldn't see it, but rework cost of that space.
Meadows? Yeah, we've redid it multiple times since.
Yeah, yeah.
We, the most recent renovation, I think, was twenty seventeen and then we had a flood in twenty nineteen where we had to replace all of the walls and all the carpeting. I mean, there are costs that go into any facility, whether you're leasing it or owning it, it doesn't matter. And in commercial lease, we're responsible for all of the interior.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Um, just because we don't have the floor plan, could you just describe? I mean, I'm curious about two things. One, what the nature of the office is going to look like? And since we're not using it for storage, there was that big storage room there. What is that basically?
So the current plan right now is we would probably knock out that wall to that room and it would be an extension of the library. So it's going to be kind of like a reading room with the new books or something like that. Um, I don't know precisely that yet either. The bathrooms are for individual, uh, bath. Well, there's three bathrooms and one nursing station. They will each have key card access so we can better monitor. And so they will all be all gender bathrooms rather than having a, uh, a big room with a shared sink and an all gender bathroom like we have here and, and Ed Ned Nobo, and I think was probably not necessarily the best idea for all of our customers. Um, uh, this maybe has a slightly higher expense by putting a wash station in each, uh, bathroom, but I think it will mitigate a lot of the problems that we've experienced. So they will be, I mean, I hate to say it, but we've spent way too much time thinking about bathrooms and honestly, in library land right now, it is probably the most frequently discussed topic outside of, uh, book banning. Um, and yeah, there are a lot of, uh, I think the thought that's gone into, uh, how we find the best solution for our patrons and one that requires the least amount of intervention from us. But it is, as you know, as it is here, right? It is regulated access of the bathrooms and we are, we plan to entirely regulate access to the bathrooms.
It's used durable, high-traffic materials that aren't like white.
He writes.
And floors.
I don't know that we, we haven't seen anything like that yet, but I, but it, but it is marked in the plan. It is a high, there's a place in there where it says wallpaper. It's not wallpaper. I, I had the same question. You probably thought like, wow, this is a forty thousand dollar wallpaper. It's a durable substance. It's on the walls, much like what you see in the bathrooms here that prevents, um,
graffiti.
Graffiti and or carving into the wall. So it's a, it's a resistant.
Interesting.
Panels that, uh, make the walls easily cleanable and graffiti resistant.
How many meeting rooms?
Uh, meeting rooms, there will be two, um, and then we are discussing whether or not we could close off the study room as well, that, that room that we talked about knocking the walls out, whether or not that could be closed off for a, uh, meeting space as well. I don't, I don't know. We have a third room, which, I mean, as far as new ideas, um, one thing that the staff are proposing right now is a, taking one of the meeting rooms out of meeting room use and turning it more into a laptop.
Go working space.
Laptop working space. Right? So that would be, it's kind of like stools and countertops around the room so that more than, uh, and people could come and go out of that space. So. And the fourth, uh, meeting room that you saw when you were out there, the four offices, one of that, the, the fourth one will be converted into a storytime area.
How about? Once you guys, we approve this in February, something, we can have a separate tour out there if people don't want to come out and we can see what we're doing.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah. Then we don't, I don't want to, just as a matter of time to go into the.
Yeah.
Inside it's going to look like.
In February, we're planning on bringing back, uh, designs and pictures and stuff that you can look at to conceive of what the space is going to be when it's, and I, we don't, we're not there yet.
No, I mean, let's, let's think.
Well, this, this is a fixed cost contract, so presumably because a lot of it isn't defined yet, there's just flexibility built into this contract to accommodate whatever we ultimately land on.
There is quite a lot of, there is some flexibility in it. I, I would say quite a lot. There are also some alternatives that they've been for us that we haven't decided on yet, like the question of you doing, um, built-in shelving or just buying the metal shelving that we currently do. Uh, we haven't made a decision on that yet, but the cost for doing the built-in shelving is not extraordinary. Uh, it is more expensive than metal shelving. Uh, price-wise, I mean, cost-wise, I think we'd have to think that through in terms of, you know, it's always the case when you have to think through price and cost because the cost of the production of steel shelving and its disposability, although it is recycled, right? So we, you know, we buy a lot of metal shelving. The production cost of doing so is quite high, uh, not related to the price.
Is there in Gun Barrel, community meeting space? Is there any space that's used?
The, the, the rural fire station will allow you to use it for certain events, their, their training room.
And we are planning a couple of meetings in twenty twenty-five as we get closer to shared signs. Rebecca, who's the new branch manager, who just started just a couple of weeks ago, uh, she has begun meetings with community groups, which is meeting with all of the schools and daycares, the businesses, uh, a lot. And then she's going to set up in twenty twenty-five a regularly scheduled time at the cafe with the coffee shop out there for anybody to drop by.
Cool.
Talk about concerns. We'll probably do some hours at the King Supers. Doug, you did a couple hundred hours to King Supers during, but when the weather gets nicer, we'll probably be back out at King Supers with Sydney as well, and maybe me and Rebecca just taking questions and asking people what feedback they have about the library. Uh, I know she's already met with several schools, um, out there. Um, there's the.
Watershed.
We're also talking about, she's also talking about doing storytime at the fire hall to start getting that crown.
Oh, they cool. I, I, there's like eight moms in my neighborhood. They're like.
And I don't know if she's talked to them yet, but they're very open to it. I, I, she may have sent me something that they're, they've already agreed to.
Yeah.
Storytime once a month or once every other.
I'm excited when I walk by or drive, ride by at night and the lights are all on. So, but that's kind of cool to look inside and see it all ripped up.
Do we have a coming soon banner?
We will soon. We, we got a, the bid came back today.
Oh, well. And let Doug hang it.
Yeah.
Can Doug hang it? Well, we, you know, I don't know about that because you do have to get permitting for signage. So all of those things will have to be permitted. We have, uh, two monument signs, a sign that will go over the doorway that will say library. And then there's a vinyl window thing, which will be opening in summer of twenty twenty-five and, you know, our web address and the phone number and probably probably your old picture. No, I don't know. Probably a contact form. We're giving out an email address that would then ultimately go to Rebecca and Tim, who's Rebecca's boss and on Sydney, who's Tim's boss. It is set up. Great. So we'll start receiving email from, comments from the public about like what they're interested in seeing. And we'll get a webpage stood up soon. I don't know. It is, it's up already too. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Girl Construction.
All right. So.
I just, so I don't actually have a contract. I have a price proposal on the scope of work. There's no contract.
Does it say work order signature document on the front?
Yeah, it does, but there's no contract.
Oh, the contract is already, I believe, negotiated through Gordian.
Okay.
This is just a.
Okay, that explains it.
This is work, this work order.
I'm just curious. So would our attorneys look at that before it? And do we do legal review before we saw? I mean, this is not a huge.
That's a question. I, I think it's a question. I, I think when, uh, we initially pitched Gordian to you several months ago, they, Kim had reviewed the contracts.
Okay.
Courtney, can you confirm?
He did with the, um, um, playground.
Okay.
So there's a umbrella contract that goes over all of these and, and Kim read the entirety of that.
Okay. And I was just curious because like we don't have this, like this contract is small, so it's not like a big thing that I would fuss about, but I was just curious why we don't have liquidated, liquidated damages. Like, we don't have like a, we don't have like a completion date or anything. So I'm just curious. I'll just email Kim. I'll just email my questions to Kim.
Yeah, they speculate two hundred days from the date this is signed, which would put us at the end of July, which is about what I think. And from my.
We can check with the, what's in the master agreement.
Uh, no, I was just curious because.
Yeah.
I genuinely want.
No, I get it. Yeah.
I don't know what that is, actually.
It's, they don't finish on time.
Much day.
You could find that.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Sorry. I was just gonna say, I don't know if Kim has looked at it, um, in particular, but I'll flag that as well. So I know you said you'll send him an email.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and presumably there's like a payment schedule as to when we, what, I don't think any of that's in here right now.
I also don't understand estimated completion date. What is that?
That's what, that's, yeah, that's like.
Currently said.
Yeah. And that's probably just an error. That's probably just an error. That probably is estimated start date, I think. Yeah. But yeah, I just.
Now, in the context of something he has sent us and whether it's in this document or not, I, I did read through this document yesterday when it came. They did talk about two hundred days. So I mean, we have been saying summer all along. And I, I think the, the timeframe that they gave me, what we don't know right now is the time it takes to get a permit.
Yeah.
And so that, uh, I think they have a relatively solid idea about the amount of time that will take to do this project. Um, but I think we're, we're looking at the permit as somewhere between four and twelve weeks. And so that will impede, uh, that'll have an impact on that final date of completion. And obviously if we run into any hitches.
Sure, sure. Yeah. And I'm not opposed to it. I just, just.
No, I get it. Yeah.
Ask this question. So.
Awesome. It's, yeah, liquidated damages, I've had them in bigger contracts. It's, yeah, liquidated damages. I've had them in bigger contracts. Yeah, like this one, I, I mean, we have a pretty good track pressure, this, this, this group and.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so.
Okay. Any more comments about the, or can we get a motion to approve this?
Approval of the contract related to the Gun Barrel construction.
Second.
Right.
They want to up to clean tech.
I gotta. All in favor of approving the contract? I, all opposed? Any opposed?
Thank you so much. I mean, I know everybody's going to be really excited. It's a, it's a big deal. I don't think it's going to be complicated. Once we get in there, it's not that many walls. The bathrooms is the most complicated part.
People are super excited.
Yeah, it's going to be great. And hopefully the signage, which can take as long as seven months. I don't think it's going to take us that long because all of the structure is already there and we're not doing anything, we're not lighting anything that's not, wasn't previously lighted. I don't, I think it's, I think all the sign code permitting will be relatively smooth. And so we should see signs there relatively soon with the coming summer of twenty twenty-five and a monument sign that says Gun Barrel Library or whatever it's going to say. I don't know. Clean tech custodial contracts. So we're very happy with clean tech. The contract this year is obviously increased. We added Mondays for Reynolds. We added cleaning at Carnegie Library. And we also opened up Novo in the course of this contract. So the contract does increase somewhat. We're pleased with the services that we've been getting with clean tech. I think they're by, by, by our own established rules. I think we will have to go out to bid for twenty twenty-six around clean tech. I, I should imagine we'd be competitive at that time. They've been great. So I would ask for approval of that contract as well.
Is this also estimated ahead through?
We'll add Gun Barrel when Gun Barrel comes online.
Not in this.
Not in this.
I move approval of the clean tech contract. All second.
All in favor of approving clean tech contracts? First three hundred and twenty K. I, pretty clean. No, seriously.
Yeah, they do a nice job. And, and you know, when you're here every day and you
Okay, Noah.
Picky, like I am, some days you see something and, but the crew that we have, two of them, two of the six or seven have been with us this entire time and they stayed. And there are some people that change over, I mean, more than two have been with us the entire time. And that is called out in the contract adjustments and I didn't mention it, but it, we are paying the cost of providing the, a portion of the benefits for them. And that was a, that was a holdover from the city of Boulder who had to pay the cost of those clean tech members who elected to get benefits within their program. And it's just kind of a part of the whole living wage thing. The twenty twenty-five liability insurance renewal, I included the whole packet and I realized it took up like sixty pages of your packet or something like that. That was because I do not think we had, the board didn't have a chance to review the entire thing. The first time around when we did it was the, the decision, the selection of the firm was a, a role of the finance committee that the entire board had settled out to them. And I think we actually negotiated the price. You know, between that group and me and IMA, who is our broker. And I don't think that the board ever got to see the full insurance policy. So it is included in your packet. If you have questions, I will be glad to write them down and relay them back to the company. We do, we have a high level of contact with them. They've been great so far, our broker. And I believe our rates in some cases, some things went down, some things went up. It's not terrible. Yes.
One question that I was going through on my iPad, so I might. Take it all in. It appeared that there was no flood insurance for Meadows. You just said that it was a cost after twenty thirteen would be covered. So I didn't know whether was it flood insurance, if the city didn't own that building or and that's on the filter or that's just an oversight or it's
No, it, in.
Some case, it's not a problem.
We did pick up flood insurance, I believe for, you're absolutely right.
Everybody don't.
We don't have it for Meadows. And I think that must be covered in the lease that we have with the outside weather. We had to do the buildings that were owned by the city. And initially the cost, twenty twenty-four, the cost was complicated because we were not able to secure flood insurance on time. The city had requested to have it by January one. But we could only get Carnegie, the only library that's not in the flood plain, covered by insurance. Now we currently have flood, we did pick up flood insurance. I think in March or April for all of the locations outside of Meadows. The flood insurance, I mean, I'll just say it's a, it is one of the most expensive things. We have to have it as a, as in the context of the IGA, the deductible is so high, we'll never hit it. And so, and, and doesn't do anything to, it doesn't do anything to preserve the value of the buildings. So if this building were to be destroyed in the flood, I think a maximum they would contribute is around five million dollars. And we'll probably never get to the deductible because there's not enough shit we have in here to throw away to make it. And so it's a, I don't want to say, I don't know. My, my personal belief is it's a racket. Like, I feel I'm, 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 it, it was the thing that caused me the most consternation in the separation from the city was having to get flood insurance because the city also gets flood insurance. They didn't get a discount on their flood insurance by us picking up flood insurance. We're paying something like eighty-four thousand dollars. The city got nothing off of their insurance by doing it. It's just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. But nevertheless, we have to have it.
For another time of strength, is we're looking ahead to the day where it's getting transferred to us?
Yeah.
Maybe there is something where we want to try to create a fund that is self-insuring, self-insuring for the future. So that, paying fees and you're saying basically throwing out, you know, tens of thousands of dollars that will never back to us.
It's interesting part.
So anyway, we don't, not every night, I'm just passing it on.
I did see there's two line items and they're still pending for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six premiums, DNO insurance and employment practices and liability. If we approve this tonight, what happens?
Yeah.
So there's the two that are marked as pending, directors and operators and employment practices liability. It's on page fifty-one.
So the individual policies don't reach the threshold for your approval. It's when we combine them together that they do. So I don't think it's necessary for you to have those in front of you to be able to prove it. And what I've asked in the memo is that you give David authorization to purchase these coverages.
Okay. So you're basically treating our vote tonight as authorization to spend up to this amount plus discretionary amount above this if necessary?
Yeah.
And I thought the DNO was something that we had talked about that we didn't need, like we, that we were covered by.
I think it's like, I think, well, we have indemnity or we have, what's it called? We have a, some sort of indemnity if we were acting in our official classes, but this is like additional in case there's something outside of that. You know, I, I, this is like a thousand bucks. I've been totally worth it.
Well, it's not, it's not the line item I was worried about. I just wanted to make her able to adjust whatever.
Mine didn't mean, I thought we didn't have that cost.
Yeah.
No, you guys wanted it.
I know. Definitely want it.
I would like it. Yeah.
You, you want it. It's so, to clarify, the indemnification that you're talking about is, you're right, the, the district indemnifies if a claim is brought against any of you acting as individuals unless, of course, your, your conduct would be considered abnormal or something criminal. The, the district will indemnify you, but the insurance is so that then you obviously get coverage for those types of claims. That it's, it's not something that you're necessarily out of pocket for.
It's basically underwriting the district itself if they have to cover us.
Okay.
Still money out of our budget otherwise.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a, can I get a motion to authorize David to what, sign? Jennifer, is that what you want, or adopt these policies?
Authorization by a motion for David to purchase these coverages for the district. So moved.
Hey. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Yeah. And again, IMA is broker. I think we will go out for a bid again. I mean, obviously if they do something like next year, but I think the timeframe would be twenty twenty-seven that we would go out, I mean, for that.
It's three years.
A bid for that one again. So far, we liked them a lot. They, Jennifer and I meet with them. They bring up stuff that we haven't thought about. And so they've been, I think, like a good broker, looking out for us. So I appreciate the work that they've done. Last one we have is for Pontom Security Services. This is for the guard services, their contract. There is a, a slight increase in the overall cost having to do with the theater. The change of hours that we have now for, to late Thursdays and Saturdays and then opening up Friday mornings. So I would seek approval for that contract as well. We've been very happy with Pontom. We have had a very steady crew for the past though sixteen months. Very pleased that we did have a change of leadership among the guards on duty recently. And so we'll see how it goes next year. I'm, I'm confident in the owners that they can, they'll get us the right person. We don't have a lead guard. We have an interim lead guard right now. And the past one was great. He was really awesome. So I don't know if you know him. He's the tall skinny guy with the whatever those things are in his years. He was the lead guard. And he had been awesome in terms not only working with staff, working with us, but keeping the rest of the guards kind of in, in, in making sure that they understood the manner in which we treat patrons. So he was we'll see. He got a great job. He, he got a great job. He was a project manager. He's back working for whatever, maybe Excel, somebody like that. Yeah, it's a project manager.
Okay, so can we get a, a motion to approve the security, Potom security contract in, in attachment X F? Sorry.
Motioned.
I should have just motioned second. All, all in favor? Oh, yeah, sorry.
So thinking about last month's meeting and Celeste's comment or worry about extended hours, how would this change, you know, like just in terms of cost? It would be another, if, if you
Just incremental. We're pricing it out now for, we'll, we'll bring something back. I, I heard from the board a number of ideas about how we might go about it and the somewhat of an interest. But so we're costing all that out. Sydney working on it with Jennifer and we'll bring that back to the board sometime in next year about what the cost would be for having added hours later at night in various places. And, you know, this building is open Thursday and Saturdays. We haven't opened up this meeting room to the public. That's one possible solution that wouldn't increase the cost, but would allow for a public meeting room to be open until potentially eleven o'clock at night on Thursdays and Saturdays.
And then you get the maker space at night too.
Maker space is already, you know, for, I didn't know, but they have already extended hours there. They've decided already to go late nights on Thursdays. So they, they have begun that already. And so they will be open. I think that, was that you that made that request? So they, they are already had planned on going extended hours to test out night hours. I think on Thursday and then if, if they could, they would go to Saturday. So it would be again, still the north building, but we're pricing out the full thing because I think if the building is active, that probably means the cafe may would be active. Cafe is active then. Then the potential for adding on the south building, which is where the cost would go up significantly because at that point you'd have a guard on each floor staffing in various areas to make sure that library is operating properly. So I think that's where we'd see the most extreme costs. Okay. We'll price it out for you. I don't know when that is. Let's say June for now and we'll bring that back.
I will say that Ben here at night, three canyon events in the last couple of weeks, two of which were and it's been great. Security guards been great and, and Ben and the tech folks, I mean, kudos. It's a really, really good team in there.
That is a great team, man. I'm hearing it from all, from everywhere tonight. Yeah.
Right.
Doug, I will route all of these contracts to you electronically for signature.
Oh, okay. So I'm, I was signing them in here. So.
Yeah, you don't need to do that because I need to have Kim sign them as well.
Okay, thanks. So we made the motion, I believe. And so can we vote? Is everyone comfortable?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, all in favor of approving the, what is it? Security contract? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And then the last thing, we have chosen not to pursue the transfer to beneficiary of a Warner trust, which some of you know a little bit about, at this time, transfer that beneficiary to the foundation. It's a matter of cost that the trust would have to pay and we don't feel like it's worth the trouble to do it. And that concludes my.
Um, okay. Let's do the easy one first, I suppose. August retreat dates. To do our retreat again, I know Sam won't be here. We'll have a new, I know, I, I just want to look out and I was thinking the first week or the, let's see, it'll be this, there's a Saturdays and Sundays. Probably the best one would be either the sixteenth and seventeenth or the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Which is the first week of, are you out of town those times? The twenty-third or twenty-fourth? Anybody?
Sorry, it's August of twenty twenty-five.
That's the purpose. Yeah, that's the, that is the purpose.
And I've seen nothing there yet.
Shocked. I do not.
Yeah. I always pick that first week or week or so of school. I think most people are around and most people, unless, you know, you know, like, because the university starts and everything starts. So everyone gets all fired up to be at their homes. So.
The twenty-third, is that what you were thinking?
I think it's the twen- twenty-third or twenty-fourth. Sat, would you rather have a Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday, but I don't really care.
Who knows what I think.
Okay, we'll pick, we'll pick a Sunday, the twenty-fourth. So please, Sylvia, will you send out a thing just to mark off all day? We'll figure out where we're going to have it and all that.
I'm going to block off the whole weekend. Maybe we'll go to Vale or something.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
That's where the chapel retreat is that I get to.
So. Yeah, no. Um, you know, I like to sleep in my own bed. Uh, let's see. All right. The other thing is the we're coming on that season where unless, you know, Sam wants to come back, we're going to be picking a, a new trustee. We won't be picking, we'll be doing our election committee. I've asked, I don't know, Sylvia and, and Benita to help us you know, update this package for the beginning of the year to send to, and then I think amongst you trustees, we'll have to pick two of you for the selection ad, you know, non-committal selection committee. So that, that basically, you, you were at the, so you remember, but it's basically you might have to meet with city staff or county, the staff kind of did everything. And then we have to meet to talk about like candidates after they, they receive, you know, we had quite a few candidates last year and they were all decently good. And then, you know, you can attend the meetings. I think they record them when you guys do your interviews and, and then and then, you know, you answer any questions that the commissioners and or city council people have. So think about that. We'll vote on that at the next meeting. Who wants to, to be that?
And we'll try to get together.
Yeah, to kind of go.
But I did want to ask, so last year we sent this memo the very beginning of January. Are we, do we have a planned date that we want to send them?
I, I was hoping like, maybe like by the second week of January.
Okay.
Second full week, if we could get that done. I think I had some questions. You know, just, and we just discuss it briefly. You know, like, let me see, let me find my questions. Ah, okay, you know. You know, if, if you guys reviewed the packet, do we want to make changes to the packet at all? Or, and if you do, email Benita or email Benita or Sylvia, either one, pick one. Because you can't email. I guess you could email all three, but you just can't comment about it. Because you can't email. I guess you could email all three, but you just can't comment about it. Um, but you you're both of them, if any comments you had about the packet. My, my personal opinion was. You know. Um, I think last year we were kind of looking for certain skills. Are we looking for any? Well, we said, you know, finance and I T were kind of important. Uh, but, you know, I don't necessarily think we need those skills. I, my thing was, I'd like to find. Big users and advocates of the library.
Just a single trustee this year.
It's a single trustee, yeah.
That we know of.
Yes, unless somebody resigns.
Please do turn around a little later, so. We can plan for it.
Yeah, do it before April.
Don't do the thing where we select someone and then you resign the next week like the legislator loves to do.
So, um, my thing would be, you know, personally, I I would just people at least get some pressure in there that where we highlight. What, um, uh. Involvement they have with the library, whether, you know, user, you know, whatever, just. I want someone that you, you know, uses within the in the space, or I would personally, this is my personal opinion, and so. Um, and then the second question I had. Um, you guys can think about that. I I gave you mine. Does the board want to take any positions on candidates? And we don't have to talk about this. Today, we can talk about it at the next meeting when we select a committee, but last year, Benita and I stayed mom. On the candidates. Um, you know. I, we could be, uh, uh, yeah, we could say, we could do a number of things. We could be mom again. We could say. These are qualified and not say anything about people that we didn't want. We could, you know. Give them a pick. I think we put them in a hard spot if we pick someone and they pick somebody different, so, um, but that's just another.
We put that candidate in an awkward place.
So that that raises another issue I wanted to raise about. We were recommended, one of the panels that I went. Were some libraries from the Western Slope that got into into trouble as a board. When they were nominated somebody, and this was after a book ban, the Crim- the Moms for Liberty kind of.
Right.
Any commission stepped in, backed control. Started picking who the board members. And I don't know that we do this. This, we could call this the Sam Amendment. So at some point, don't we want to be engaged within this I G A with the city and the county? Give us more control over choosing who sits on the board.
I think that's what we tried, right?
Yeah, I don't know that.
I mean, I, but I'm, again, to come back to it at some point, right?
Sure that that would be the preference of everybody here, just but like, yeah, when we're negotiating, this was like a. This was, yeah.
Do you think it's a hard sell politically because none of us are elected? I mean, there is something to be said for having us chosen by elected votes.
So in these three years of they're involved in this.
We can do that.
Well, I mean, we'd revisit the question.
I want to see what their like. Their interest in the second year was markedly lower than the interest in the first year. Now. Not that they didn't have interest in who the people were and all that stuff. I'm not saying that, but like. Um, I it just, you know, um, I think as they see us functioning properly, they might have, and that was the goal.
Right, so I'm just thinking. If there's something in the course of this interview, so, for example, the two non-voting members. At least the committee, well, we, we're gonna take this back when we talk as a board. Of these candidates, these are the strengths of these candidates we think. Because the council candidates, council members and the commissioners who have sit on this are oblivious to that. I mean, they barely paid attention to us. We went to the council meeting and presented all Jen's work, and the commissioners passed on it.
Right.
So that's their way, fine. Let's not give them over. Let's see what power we can pull back when, you know, with the I G A. As to how the selection goes.
And that that's the impetus of my question is, as we transition to that year three, you know. Do do we want to start having some, you know, checkmark or X?
Yeah.
Because there could be a thing where this person is, you know, completely unsuitable for, you know, that or. You know, they want to ban books and not that, you know, we don't know who's, how the political winds are gonna fly, you know, and. Um, with our elected representatives. And so, you know, do we, um. Uh, you know, that that's the question. We don't have to decide it now. I think we've debated it.
Tom, I, it's it's only gotten worse on the Western Slope since, uh.
Worse.
Some are worse.
Yeah.
And there is massive takeovers and reappointment of boards happening now in Colorado. And so I I think, you know, you may consider all kinds of tactics and how you want to approach it is your own business. I mean, the state legislature last year passed a. A bill that made it incredibly more difficult to ban books and and made it, uh. Not legal to criminally prosecute public library staff for failure to remove certain books from the collection. So. All of those were positive things, but you may, you know, just a tactic, ask them to, you know, support in documentation. That legislation that passed last year. I mean, I don't think you can ask them to say. Don't pick somebody who doesn't ban books because it's like the political winds as they change. That may still be an objective, but it, you know, supporting, finding some things that they. That they would support would be good.
And I'm not really that worried, but I I just think, I mean, I think our challenge may be around property taxes, fiscal issues. Look, Ben.
Right.
But as it goes forward, and we have the, we're we're trusted to make these decisions. At some point. I just think we need to have a more input into who else sits here. When we have the disinterested government bodies at the moment about them. So I'm happy about that. I'm just saying, but.
Well, it also makes our job a little bit easier in recruiting, because if we, as a board. Get to know people and can recruit them better, you know, openly, then, you know, and we have some say, you know. Um, anyway, I it's, I, you know, we have a lot of time before we get to that point. I think one thing like I. Think we could ask him at our, you know, one of our neat meetings in January or February to maybe give us a some advice on it.
I think we want that in January.
In January.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we can do that.
I think he'll tell you that ten years ago, ninety nine percent of the boards appointed, uh, recommended, send a recommended candidate to their. Uh, elected officials for ratification. That's that's not the case now.
Yeah, okay.
There is, there are more, uh, elected officials who are taking control of the process. As a matter of course.
Because the 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 people did ask us, the, um, com- commissioners and they they said, do you? Want to take a position on these? And, you know, at the time, we we said no. And I think we could go into that. I'd like to go into that with that decision, you know.
Yep.
With.
Agreed.
With the people.
Let's carve out some time on next month's agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Discuss this.
Yeah, and I, so, um, Benina and I will definitely make look at this and, um, come back with recommendations, but I mean. If you all have some, I know the holidays are, you know, busy, but if you have some time to look at it, that'd be great.
And then.
Of course, you know, Sam, we can persuade you to spend a little more time.
No, I I didn't want a long term, but, um, I I do have things I would like in in the board. Do I pass those on to you or just to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you're still here for five more months.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, and and it's obvious, I do think representation matters, and there are four white guys on the board who who are fabulous. But, um, but I do think that it behooves us to be representative of of the whole community, and so that's something to think about. And I like numbers people on the board, so I still, I still like, I'd still love to have a C P A on the board. Um, but it does start with a demonstrated commitment and hopefully enthusiasm for the library, you know. So that's just kind of in a nutshell.
Another, another piece on the renewal on the, you know, do we take a position is, what if, you know. One of us wants to run again, you know, and then we get put in the pool with all the others, you know. Does the board take a position on that? Put them, put the board in maybe a weird spot, but you know, like, that's another thing to kind of think about. Um, but, you know, but if you were appointing your own person, the person would say, I would want to, you know, do it, and I guess you'd have to get four votes. To get you into the next committee. Um, it's a long term. I don't like five years is like a long time to be on any board, so. Um, uh, you know, Benita is the one, these two have five and Benita were four, but, you know.
Four and five, technically.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so anyway, um. Yeah, no, no, it's a, it's another thing to think about. Um, so, yeah, if, take a look at the package. You know, provide any comments to. Uh, you could either reply to the whole trustee thing, or you could just reply to Benina and and Sylvia. So. So anyway.
Four years and five years, you guys all have plenty of time to get up your, uh, law degree while you're here. We used, we used to have.
A couple of degrees.
We used to have, we used to have majority, uh, lawyer board.
I know.
Lawyers are drunk, huh?
There's still three of us.
There are only three of you that are, where are, Benina, you're, okay.
Don't you think she get a lot?
I mean, you have that vibe.
My son is, though. It's like, you know, I'm passing that on, right? He's.
Only three lawyers.
He's gonna be all right.
Three lawyers.
Was four, you know.
He's probably about right. More than that, the majorities.
Yeah.
I did, the outreach last year was great.
Yeah, and we've done more outreach. You you guys sat at an event, um, I've gone to events. Um, you know, I went to, so, um, I think we'll still do, I I would recommend and and I'll do this if. If nobody else wants to, is another Q and A session in February for potential, um, applicants. Um, I, you know, I think we're doing really good work, so that I think the work is part of the recruiting thing. The the diverse candidates is tough, I think, just given the nature of the role, but, um.
I think it's much easier with just monthly meetings and.
Yeah, going back to, yeah, and that was another thing that, you know, I wanted to do, you know, this fall, so. Just to to reduce our workload and all that kind of stuff and and the staff's workload and, uh. Um, you know, so, um, you'll please, you know, I so think about, hey, do you want to be? On the two-person ad hoc, um, not ad hoc, two-person, um, non-voting member of the committee. Um, and then, uh, yeah, I think, David, somebody needs to talk to the city about. Sending out the packet or county.
Well, that's what gets generated from the memo that.
Oh, okay, they get generated, okay, yeah, the technical details, okay, okay.
Just wanted to make sure. It seems like we need to wait until our next board meeting before we send that out.
Yes.
Was dated January second.
Yeah, we can, the six, it'll be fine, the sixteenth, seventeenth, I think it'll be fine.
It's just, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's this handbook that I received at that conference in Breckenridge, all ages welcome, recruiting and retaining. Younger generations for library boards, friends groups. So it has some interesting things in here, and I'll share it with my co-committee member, and. Then if we find some things that might apply to us, I think it could be helpful. But, you know, younger generation could be a good goal, too, right?
We have done that respect involved, and I, we, I think we currently are doing better than. Um, ninety percent of the boards in the state.
And I will say.
We still have no Zoomers on this board. So we still have no Zoomers on this.
No.
I talked to one that was interested, but I think, but I would say, you know, also in your personal capacity that you're walking around. You know, and meeting people and and they have a lot of interest in the library is, hey, this is a position you can have too. And unlike other boards and commissions, um, so that was another thing. I sat, I went to that Boards and Commissions Day. Um, back in September for the county. Um, and, uh, you know, talk to the that group. Um, but this, unlike other boards and commissions, we actually have. I mean, our power, we have, we can, we have a budget, like, and we can spend money, so that's pretty cool. Whereas like, you know, you can, if you're in part of a, you know, city budget committee, you just like send a letter to the. City manager who may or may not read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, all right, um, that's all I have. Any legal updates?
Well, I have a, just trustee matters.
Yeah, sorry, any other trustee matters?
I just wanted to say that I, um, attended last evening the Death Cafe event that was here. And it was actually at this room, and it was excellent. And there were about twenty people here, and. Um, I just want to find a way to do it more regularly, and there's one scheduled for, um. Reynolds in April, but the group really wanted more convening of this group, so.
What it, could you explain what that says?
It's people talking about death and dying, and so there are like death doulas that attended. Um, there were people who, like me, who had lost somebody in their family just recently, and there were other people who. Um, have been, um, know that they have a disease that is gonna make their lives a little shorter, so. It was just in, there were a couple therapists who worked with people in this arena, and so I just found it fascinating. To hear other people's stories, right? And just this expansion, but particularly like death doulas and, you know, their role. And there was a woman who authored a book about this and.
Oh, wow.
It was just like very interesting.
Was she there too?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
There was like just very, it was a great conversation in this room, and you could, you didn't have any tables. It was just, you know, chairs and around and, um. Uh, facilitated by two women, but, you know, anybody could facilitate, there's no like magic, but. You know, internationally, these death cafes are very common in other countries and. Happen pretty regularly, so I just think it's something to pursue, so I'm gonna do that.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing that. That's awesome. Yeah, I had a neighbor who asked, was interested in going to it. I don't know if they were there last night, but. Um, that's awesome. Always impressed by all the work. Um, any other trustee matters?
Didn't you say you had something else?
No, I was hoping from Courtney, I I just wanted to, I so, Kim's not here tonight, but Kim confirmed, uh, for a legal update. So Kim confirmed this last month that the library is exempt from the governor's five point five cap. That was written into our ballot language, uh, in in advance, so the election, we're exempt from that, so. It should you have to run into the idea of tax credits, or we are just getting way too much money at some point. That will be a consideration for this board because there's no legal, uh, boundary set upon us, uh, as it was. Turns out a lot of the library districts, uh, are exempt, right?
They listed specific districts that they exempted?
No, we we de-bruce.
De-bruce, and I, so I asked for the confirmation line. I had read the bill thinking that it sounded as if most groups that had de-bruised had. Done, but then it mattered, actually, Courtney can confirm or not, I, it mattered exactly what language you used in the ballot. Uh, in the de-brusing, so not simply de-brusing was enough, but, uh, de-brusing in a particular way. In the manner in which Kim wrote the language for the ballot, uh, we've exempt from the. Uh, the legislature's five point five cap.
Um, and then Courtney, I think for next meeting in January, just to have Kim or you or somebody talk about. The trustee appointment process and, you know, just give us advice on. How we should move forward and on selecting someone to, selecting or not selecting someone to, um. You know, put forward based on applicants.
Okay, yeah, I've taken all those notes down, and, um, as far as legal updates. You already covered the contracts that we were had on our to-do items, and you just touched upon the mill levy. Tangentially, but, uh, again, confirming that it was. The mill levy certification was completed prior to the deadline, so you're all set there, but yes, it's, um. Based on your election questions, you are, you have been waived from the five point five percent, so. That was all previously done, but yeah, I will make sure that Kim is aware of the other topics that you've raised tonight, so that he's prepared to address them in January.
All right, without any other questions, uh, we shall adjourn. Okay, adjourn. I don't know, why would a library commissioner have a gavel?